The line, I know it's more there, but it has the ID Networks maintenance, which I included the service hold we've made to them over the last year, well, since 2018 when we've had them. And then the Motorola is the radio contract that when we purchased the radios, it was decided then that we would discuss the contract for that at budget time. Sound Advice, they would be over our-
Excuse me one second. I don't have a page. Do you have it here? Page forty-six is-
Yeah, I have it.
Yeah, mine goes from forty-five to forty-seven.
You want to look at mine?
Yeah.
Here, go ahead.
And I will tell you that that need to change behind probation is what she needs to have under her statewide nine one one, or at least in-
Oh, sorry. No, it was just, it was reversed. She was behind all the information?
Okay, so your information is in on twelve twenty-two?
Yeah, it's just, this was in the back.
So I understand page forty-seven is what you have with forty-six?
Page forty-six, do you have anything behind it for the information?
I'm sorry, can't see it.
No, that's fine. So the Sound Advice, they oversee our computers. So in the past, the Sheriff's Department and nine one one has used Steve Mullen to do any maintenance on, or any issues we've had to do with Steve Mullen. Now that he's with the prosecutor's office, his availability isn't as good as it used to be. So when Steve's not been able to fix things, we've called Sound Advice. So I reached out to them to see if they could give us an agreement on what it would cost to use them. And that's what they came up with. ID Networks is our CAD software. That's their maintenance agreement. So if we have issues, we can call them. Motorola is for the new radio. And then J and K Communications, so we've spent a lot of money with them this year so far. That's why I have the additional in for tomorrow. They were able to come up with a maintenance agreement that we can call them at any time, and that's what it's going to cost us for the year. It never fails whenever a radio goes down, it's after hours. And they're in Columbia City, so they told us a lot of money for after hours.
So J and K is already in there?
Right. They take care of our VHF radio. Motorola takes care of our eight hundreds and the consulates that we have in dispatch.
Yeah, this is all under, we hear as many-
Correct.
Remember us if they don't see-
Right.
Turning in, so those are, they're all in line?
Right.
Good.
Yeah. Yep, so Sound Advice was thirteen thousand nine hundred and twenty. Thirteen thousand nine hundred and twenty. ID Networks is twenty-seven thousand three twenty-five. Motorola is twenty-nine thousand six hundred and two. And J and K is fifteen hundred. And I included all of those agreements in your packets as well.
How much was the three here?
Fifteen hundred. Motorola was twenty-nine thousand six hundred and two.
And these are annually?
Those are annually.
So Motorola had multiple options. Is this the most expensive option?
That is the option that at the end of ten years, you get new equipment.
Anybody have any other questions?
I tried.
Thanks, Cassie.
Okay, I give this number. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Oh, wow.
First off, and I guess most importantly, do you have any questions about my budget program?
Go ahead.
Okay, I asked for an increase in the park steward for a hundred and fifty dollars. He would be in case for blocking the lines and doing cleaning in the clubhouse and the rest of the department. He has gone over and above what was requested of him. Pretty much does it all. He's under contact, whoever proceeds, he's under contact with the commissioners for his lawn maintenance up there. Plus, he's been cutting brush, cutting trees, cutting firewood up for campers. He's been doing some painting and just, I just thought that I would ask for an increase for him for the work that he does and what he is required to do. The second item was housekeeping supplies. This year, it doesn't really show, but we're being ready to buy supplies at the end of the season. We had enough to get us through. So far, we still have September, October remaining or this month. Two, two events stocked up as far as housekeeping supplies. The COVID-19, well, after we opened, took a toll kind of on spending because we had to provide extra bleach, antiseptic, wipes and things such as that to keep up the tab. Repairing maintenance, the extra costs. We are preparing for next year to have painting in both parks. Playground equipment. The, there's a, for all of you that are familiar with, we have a TPT that's been there, I think, as long as the park has been in effect. And we're going to rethink that, refurbish it. And also, I would like to, on repair and maintenance, we had a large, we had a big problem with the startup of the season as far as damaged water lines and downstream freezing. And part of that's my fault and the other guys that we closed the park down. We had had faucets and things changed for showers. Didn't realize from the contractor that installed those and those had to be taken apart every season and, you know, taken out. So they burned, we had to do a lot of extra work on that. And plus, blow it up, I can't see.
You can lower your math, Jeanne.
Okay. Yeah, so on that increase on repair and maintenance, that's reasonable then. Trash and miscellaneous, I'm going to look into a small dumpster next year for Deer Creek Park. We, in the past, have not provided trash receptacles up there because it's a remote part of the county and they disappear or residents in the area decided that they want to just deposit their trash on their way to it for us. So we're going to try something small. That's reasonable to be increased there. Furniture and fixtures, we, we have a camping spot at French Coast Park. And the reason I asked for additional money in that is we're going to start, we have two picnic tables for each box, so we're going to try to increase that either in purchasing or having someone build the floors and do purchasing for materials or such, as I have to say. Basically, that is the increases that I have asked for. Any questions that you have about that? It actually is an increase of a lot of money dollars for the entire.
Don't say it.
Do you bring, bring in about how much money?
Right now, we have actually, we, we got, we received the okay from the Health Department and the commissioners to open up a little bit before, right after Memorial Day. It was actually going to Governor's order and everything. It was supposed to be after June first, whatever it was. And then we were a little bit early. But it was a whole family that rented the entire park. So right now, I just made a deposit. We're getting ready to make it. In two months, we have brought in twenty-two ninety-five, and I still have money to collect from the other steward for French Coast Park. I don't know what that is at this time. We have, and for June and July, I'm proud of the fact that we have brought in that much revenue. It's surprising to me that we can bring that in two months' time. We still have September and a few months of October also. We have the clubhouse rented. It's already reserved. The upcoming Labor Day weekend campground is clearly sold out right now due to COVID and to what I've read and everything, but you know, about campgrounds is people are going out and buying campers, and that's their form of recreation right now and after social distance. I look for a pretty good amount of money to come in for the rest of the year. And that, that'll be through the year to October.
Are you having success with your park board? I mean, are you, is your park board full?
Park board is full. It shows, you know, on the, the board members, we have only been able to have one meeting. We're six months down, and as soon as everything and everyone felt comfortable, I come and I can meet with you personally. We're going to add that meeting. That's a good thing because that means everything's going well. We usually don't meet unless we have a problem or some kind of changes that we want to discuss, and then we'll need this board to make the decision. And we will have those, you know, throughout the rest of the year. Especially near the end of the year, planning for some minor little changes, adjustments, and work sessions everyone has. Hopefully, hopefully, everything calms down and we're able to meet, so.
What's your number in case you got a question?
Seven six five four one two seven zero nine zero. And that's about all the, that's about all I have. That's my expectations for the, asking for the increases.
Well, thank you very much, Bob. Anybody else have a question?
Any questions?
A lot of people do. A lot of work.
Well, I thank you for that and everyone's appreciation of the park, so that's a good thing. One other thing that I forgot to mention was I asked for a mileage increase for myself. We have a park steward at French Coast Park that lives about a mile and a half away. And then we have another one in Deer Creek, which is Ruffel Brooks. He takes care of the grounds. And he lives at our park steward up there. He lives approximately a half mile from the park. But there are times when these people are out, out of, on vacation or out of town and can't service the people that, that need to make rentals. So I, I drive from Delphi. I live in Delphi. I drive to French Coast Park and I drive to Deer Creek Park. Sometimes I'll do it two times a week. I was, I really, it really could turn into more money than that, probably. We've dealt with, it's twenty-four miles round trip to French Coast, thirty-four miles round trip to Deer Creek. So I asked for three hundred dollars to kind of base that on ten trips per summer, which probably is actually turning into twenty to thirty trips per summer. Also, meeting with contractors, if we do have problems, explaining things to them. I chase parks for them. Our nutrition works very good, so if he needs something, I will try to run and get whatever parts or media or whatever like that. That's, that's my expectation of that. I, in the past, this is my second stand, I was one more time. In the past, I had a mileage in there and the president of the board changed over the years. It was somewhere or somehow. Very good.
Good job.
Appreciate all your work, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you very much.
Keep it up, Bob.
Oh, there she is. Just in time to live.
So I basically added the ten percent further salary. The deputies I did raise, seventy-five. I, I know that they get sixty now, but they have done calls for us in White County where they get more than double. And we're going to start losing our people. So I did ask for an increase. It's a lot of time consuming. One, one call takes several days, so sixty dollars, there's not a whole lot for them. I added office supplies. I haven't had an office supply line. Since I came into office, I don't know if they did before, but basically I need file folders, I need things, I need flash drives, things like that to be able to do the job. So that's why I added there. Operating supplies were my bags, cleaners, et cetera. The last two years, I have received grants from the state. So I've been trying to get bags through there. This year, I did have to buy bags before the grant came out. I luckily did because of COVID, because I have my bags on order from the state that they got through the grant, but we obviously can't get them. So we're down to not a lot of bags left. Cleaners, I don't have any cleaners for like cleaning pots and stuff. Basically, I'm using White County just when I go over there. Again, that's not there. They shouldn't have to supply me. But we do need something to be able to clean our pots and stuff after every call. Storage fees was four thousand. I asked for, I bumped that a little bit because we've had an increase. So far, my two years in office, I've had an increase in calls both years. This year, we're almost to the same amount halfway through the year that I had last year total. And none of it's COVID related. So I don't know what the difference is, but our, our call volume has definitely increased. Some, obviously overdosed in the opioid epidemic. So I also put thirty thousand in, an increase for the autopsy because of the same reason. I've had to ask for additional since two years now, so I figured it was easier to just go ahead and plug that in before having to move to get the additional. Animal dues, I kept the same. Basically, that just covers our, our association fees each year. Training fees, I kept that the same. I haven't used that yet this year. I, I held off because I didn't want to miss a big training because of the COVID, then kind of put the trains off. Vehicle maintenance, I put four hundred. I know we didn't use much this year, but we have a little vehicle issue, so I just want to make sure we keep up on oil changes, servicing, things like that that need to be done so we can keep the vehicle running as long as we can. Bully maintenance, I, I have it only a hundred just because obviously right now, I don't know what's going to happen. All right, they're selling the building, so I don't know where I'm going to go, so I have no clue what, if it's going to need maintenance wherever we go or what it's going to entail. Fuel, that's so explanatory. It's, again, depends on the runs, things like that. I was also told that, you know, obviously, when I'm coming to meetings, things like that with the vehicle, I can bring that instead of my personal, because I put a lot of miles and gas into my cars for the doubt. Utilities, again, that's going to be based on a building. I don't know what, right now, it's only ten dollars a month, but if we get something new, I have no clue what it will be or if we do it with any other departments where that will go. So I just kind of kept that, tried to keep it at a lower cost till we have some kind of idea. And the last thing I have was just money for a building. Because I do have the vehicle now, it would be nice to have somewhere for it. I have no office for families to meet in. I've been meeting them on a road or in their house, which isn't always the safest. So going, would be the greatest thing that we can get next, so. Other than that, I didn't have, the only thing I thought about that I really put in was a cell phone just because I'm using my only cell phone for my personal use. And they can subpoena my phone if we have to go to a court case. I know that a person, that's forty-three dollars a month, but that's the only thing I forgot to add.
So with the eighty-nine thousand for the building, is that, where, where are we at with that? Is that likely to happen? The commissioners are deciding?
That's what they, that I didn't know. I haven't been told any things for a building.
You know anything about that?
Well, Sam.
The commissioners, this eighty-nine thousand dollars for a building, are they thinking they'll do that or they think they won't?
This, I've heard that.
Well, they had it at their last meeting, but that was to put my building up for sale.
They mentioned it.
Over, they've mentioned putting me in a garage behind the EMS building. Sheriff's Department has their vote on other things that's full. So I don't, and it's not public for sure, so I, by state statute, have to have a private pool place. And I would prefer center of the county because even if I'm not in office, somebody else would. It will be long. If you go to Burlington for a call and have to start Burlington, go to Delphi and go back. I mean, center of county would just be more, and for a area. I know we've lived at a lot of different places and they've sold before we can get to them or something. I know that that one specifically is, is one that we looked at and it's been on a hundred-three years, so it would need a small pool building or a garage, but other than that, it didn't need a lot of-
They have an interview at budgets, Mark, and he didn't mention it today. I don't believe it. It's sixty thousand.
Okay.
Is it still, is it still money-wise for us to, I know you sent the body certificate down to do the, is it still cheaper to do that than to- No, no. On that, I go to White County right now, but prices are increasing. I know that Tippy, for one, is going from, I don't remember, two hundred or three hundred right now for the autopsy one. And they are increasing to anywhere from five hundred to a thousand dollars. And their storage is going from fifty dollars a night to two hundred dollars a night. So the other places, obviously, are, I expect them to go, well, little places there are that do come. That's why I still think we would be better off to have our own. It wouldn't take a lot. Like, you could get everything for less than ten thousand dollars. Just, the doctor I use has his own tools and everything. He needs a table, which we priced around four. He needs light and he needs water. That's it. So, I mean, you don't need anything very big. But I had another county reach out to me to ask me if we had anything because obviously, they, they can't afford those prices either. So, I mean, it could be a possibility of bringing in some income for the county if we have somewhere. But they're, they've had, they're just getting slight.
Well, hopefully, the commissioners are looking at you going and have a good, you don't have that information.
Yeah. Yeah, those are expensive prices.
Do we have a contract? So we just take them and then they bill us whatever they want to bill us?
It's part of the contract when you don't know where they're going to go. The other places are charging.
You're going to White County outright, and they're not the same.
I use the same place, the White County one, which is a Puyallum home.
In Puyallum?
And one, it's closer, so it's easier. I mean, like I said, it, it takes a lot of time to drive. But when you have a call, plus then you put in the autopsy, you got to go back and forth several times. So it's a lot closer and more convenient because we have a lot of calls in that part of our county than to go along with Tippy. And we have a good relationship because they help, we mean help with coverage and that. Obviously, we help them coverage, so we have a very good relationship. But there's like five or six other counties going into Tippin County. So, I mean, they're just, it's packed. And the doctor there wasn't always available when we needed them. So the doctor I use has, he had just hired another doctor and I've never had a problem with him fitting us in.
So I would presume that all of the contingent counties, maybe, except for Cleveland County, has their own autopsy? I mean, Tippy, White, Howard.
I don't know what Katz uses. Howard is in the midst of getting one. They use the hospital right now, but it's small. They only, they share the pool with hospitals, so he is getting his own. Keston does not have one. White is in the midst of getting one. Like I said, he's running out of the Puyallum right now, but they are in the process of putting the DNA in the corner in their old fire station or building or something. So he's in the process of getting a new one. And then Tippy has theirs. That's all ours around.
So Cleveland's the only one that we could possibly?
Well, the other one that reached out to me was Benton.
You're saying Clinton does say it?
They don't have them. They don't have them.
But do I understand right, you have a good working relationship with White County now and it's working fairly with?
It is.
But the cost is extremely high.
Yeah.
They're going up everywhere. Autopsy costs are way higher.
Yeah.
And that's why I asked the original question was, is it still viable for us to, or instead of putting all this money into a building?
But I still need somewhere to be able to meet families in office and somewhere for the vehicle and my storage stuff. So Mike's out of storage for me. I, he can't put any more of, and I actually have all this stuff coming from a grant that I have no clue where we're going to put. So if you go down to the basement, we're pretty, we're busting at the seams with storage. So he's been nice enough to loan me that area, but, I mean, I, I don't have anywhere to call home for my stuff. And like I said, after hours or weekends, I don't think they really want me to bring any families in here per se. I don't. We discussed it once.
Can you mention us for the finger bone? To be able to do that? I think it's kind of touchy though, too, because it's a, you have one finger bone and then another one. So you have to have the body and-
Yeah. And I'm not saying that we don't need a home. I'm not, I do. My, I mean, and like I told the commissioners, my deputies don't even have access to our equipment right now. So, if something, if something would happen to me and say I had to be in the hospital or something or whatever, they can't even get in to get our equipment unless I turn it off to Mike possibly or, I mean, like, they have no access to it without me. So, it'd be nice to have a place to be able to let my deputies have access to stuff too and have offices and not have to look out of their own home and through their stuff too.
I think we need a storage area and office, place to park your vehicle. It appears to me that the autopsies get with that good working relationship in White County. It'd be done much, much cheaper that way.
The only other thing with the autopsies is you've got to remember that I am calling and waking up to people that should be at funeral homes and maybe getting a good night's sleep to let us in at three o'clock in the morning. So, it's, I feel like we're also imposing on them because I have to go through them to be able to get to it. So, you know, when you have those three, four o'clock in the morning calls, if they actually have a night they can sleep, I'm loving them. So, I mean.
They're agreeing to terms of service, right?
Well, it is, but I know at times I called them and they are, they're busy and they're off. And it's like, they're not on call that weekend and I'm the one that's calling and saying, hey, I need to call you now.
That's why the rates are going up. They didn't pay for it.
Right now, three, maybe three hundred for the autopsy, fifty nine, fifty large a night storage. So, the family gets the autopsy. They usually try to get to it next day or two days after, but there have been times we've had to wait for it even afterwards. We've had to store because families haven't decided what funeral homes. So, I think we had one that was for nights once.
Where does the pathologist come from?
He comes from Fisher's.
Fisher?
I have a question about the van. So, that's just our, the van and the, that's what I'm writing down.
Did you get one located?
Of April? I actually did. I talked to them yesterday. I found two. And I think I'm leaning into probably Monticello actually has one. Who's done a very good job of, I've gotten him down to quite a bit of money lowers. So, I told him I would let him know for sure today. But he also said, I know we talked about the money. He said, if I had a note, I don't know if it would be from the Commissioners Council or something, but they know it's from the county, they could possibly go and he could pick it up as soon as we have the note we have to take. But the only other thing I don't know about is the van.
I'm gonna make sure to get it. Ensure that.
All right. Well, and we can't, until we have the topper, I've got to have someone to be able to transport. So, I either don't trade the van or we just have the county put the van in auction.
Did they hold you to trade the van? And then use the backup for the EMS?
If it's available.
If it's only two weeks, right?
Well, I don't know how long it's gonna take to get the topper. That, that's gonna be my, if I can go ahead and, once I tell them I'm a go on a vehicle, I have to call the topper place to have them match the paint and get it from wherever their dealer is. And then they've got to put the lights and everything on it. So, I have no idea how long that's gonna take till I call him back and tell. He has it already, but we have to change it because it's not safe. And it's a different color. So, he kept it pending just because of the production. So, if he gets it back in two weeks, yeah, that's great. But I don't know how far out those are. So, I don't know if we can get the van or the truck before, you know, if we wait till April or whatever. I don't know if the topper will allow it then.
I don't think of a letter.
That's just what he told me. So, I've never.
I could probably use any work for the topper.
Right, until I get the topper, I think it's, I'll just, then once where I told the guy.
So, you want something in writing that says if you have the van?
Well, no, that was if he, if we wanted it before the check was, but no. If we needed it before, which I said I didn't pick up a topper at that time, it's, we're gonna have to wait on the topper anyway, so it's kind of a new point.
So, as of today, you're getting, you're capable of funding this there and that? So, you'll be able to order the topper tomorrow?
She knows that. We just have to get the bills. I just have to tell him, hey, we're going for it. And he's just gonna send me bills that I. He was gonna send me, that's eighty by September.
And these are due this Friday, so.
And he's been pretty, he's in a meeting all day of the day. He was kind of trying to give me an updated quote with the new price he got me by this afternoon. Once he does that, I can tell him to write it up.
Order the topper tomorrow and you're on your way.
I can probably order it today.
If you want to get the topper at the same time while I'm checking the invoice.
Okay.
I'll forget that.
Okay.
Is this one the straight price at that point?
Yes. He didn't first quote that, and so that's why I closed him on it. And then later he was able to take some more off. Although it wasn't quite where I wanted it, so he took a little more off. So, he did get it at work in one week. So, he's, he's been very good at trying to get lost this way.
But they're not selling many, sixty thousand.
Um, it's Twin Lakes. And I think the final price he told me this morning that he came down to was thirty-two, maybe actually a quarter of the two than what we were at. Thirty-two nine sixty-seven.
And Ram?
It's a Ram. It's the tradesman. Fine, fine. One.
Almost like the rest of the year. You may not want that.
I know. Unless I've not. No, no. They're not easy to find in the price range. They're about seventy to eighty usually. So, they're kind of hard to find for what we needed.
Well, thanks. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Keith, let's wrap it up.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Yeah, I've got enough sanitizer in the skin. Blood, slime. Some just photos and stuff like that, kind of backup somewhere. However, you guys want to look at those? Yeah. Oh, yeah, sure. Sorry. Some of the figures and pictures are going around as kind of like bags and the budget information I put in there for some of the increases. I wanted to throw a number out there. You guys not have any kind of details or any kind of photos for you to show up and find in the C U A?
Like, what are you, what are we talking about?
This one would be included, the pictures would go underneath the repaired building and structure, that increase. Typically, in the past years, I've, on my evaluation, it's been right around five thousand. And I asked for an increase of that around thirty. I don't anticipate that it'd be all the thirty, but my concern is, is that there has been a push here recently with something going on with like the museum and stuff like that. Other entities that may require heavy machinery, jackhammering, whatever it may be. My own concern is that if you look at some of these photos, you're gonna see that we have walls, we have cracks that are, are newer because they don't even have the dust in them yet and they haven't been filled. So, you go into a building like this and you start vibrating it more, you're gonna see where some of the walls, we have plaster that's separating from the wall that needs to be fixed. Like right above Josh's head, that's. So, and like Judge Hopkins's office is really bad, which that's some of those photos like that too. It's gonna, the easiest way to do it would be knocking down, you know, tag up drywall and just finish it out that way. But that's just part of me trying to justify why I'm asking for an increase on that, that item line. Let's start at the top. So, I didn't know where everybody was at on increases and on raises or anything else like that. I'm happy where I'm at, but I put in for myself, in my position, a six percent, which gave it up to thirty-nine, nine fifty-seven. On the part-time help, their current pay per hour is ten twenty-five. The increase in that was to move it up to twelve. In the unique position that they're, that we are all in, for us, we have to be universal. Each department has to work within itself. Where we see the public, the public every day, all day long, each individual department. So, personalities, work ethics, presence, all takes a factor. And I think at ten forty-five, you're gonna get, I mean, I was for a long time just begging and hoping someone would turn in an application. I got really, really lucky with Shalen. High energy, very focused, great work ethic. But at ten forty-five, it wouldn't take much for another job to come up for like eleven dollars an hour or whatever else to take that position right away from her. And then I'm looking at, you know, hoping someone else will apply. This is definitely a two-person job. I mean, especially with the mechanic side, maintenance, the outside work. It's been really, really nice with her and I because she's universal, just like I am. Not afraid to get dirty, not afraid to do what needs to be done, get it done. And it would be really nice if it was more of a full-time position, but I'm going with what I have right now. And I just, I believe that the increase in pay will retain that type of person, even if she decided to move on. But it would give us better options for the courthouse, for the public, to retain somebody that has a higher work ethic than everything else. So, that's for the two part-times. Special event for the extra events, I increased that one by five hundred dollars. I believe that after pandemic and stuff hits, that I'm hoping, I'm hoping that with the efforts of cleaning it up, making it shine again, it's gonna bring more, more people wanting to come into the courthouse to have an event. Prongs, weddings, stuff like that, that would bring additional income into the courthouse as well. That's what I'm hoping. So, that was the purpose of that increase. Branding, name I was advised on what to use for that. Basically, it's a clothing allowance to be able to at least buy myself and staff work shirts so that we're not turning up our personal work shirts because on any given day, at any given time, we're dealing with different types of chemicals, human waste, whatever it may be outside. That way, we're not turning up our personal items. I put it for two hundred bucks, just enough to cover a couple of shirts for staff member for that. Janitorial supplies was at seventy-five hundred. I moved that up to eight thousand just to give it a little bit more cushion. It's very, it was very, very difficult since January when I got hired on to analyze what my spending would be after we hit COVID because it just went haywire with the excess amount of wipes, sanitizer sprays and stuff like that. That's the reason why my 2020 budget on expenses is a lot higher overall because of all the extra stuff, which I'm hoping with the CARES Act and stuff like that will get that reversed to us, I'm hoping. But I'm not hurting. I just know that it just threw it all out of whack once COVID started hitting. Trying to make sure everything was safe. I bought the spray, like the battery paint gun, except for it's a sanitation gun. It's, it's pretty cool. It's, I can go into a room and basically it's just a, it's a paint gun, it's battery operated. And I can go into a room and I can sanitize the whole entire room and I can do the whole entire courthouse. Where typically if you send in somebody with a spray gun, cloth and everything else like that, it takes, you know, hours. I can knock out the whole entire courthouse in like an hour spraying it down. And it takes like anywhere from eight to twelve minutes to where it completely evaporates off of it. So, nothing's getting wet. As long as you stay within twelve inches, which I stay further away from any kind of electrical components, it doesn't hurt them at all. So, it was something that I thought that was a critical need, especially since I went for a long period of time just by myself, which also goes back to why the pay increase for the two part-times is essential for me just to be able to retain somebody. So, that, that tool there alone helped me out a lot.